Alexandria tomorrow, I pick up a puppy with mine.
Okay, Congress meeting to order.
Uh, like.
Uh, this is the regular city council meeting for Tuesday, May the fifth, two thousand and twenty.
Yes.
Oh, Darby, I'm sorry.
We have Jeff on the line.
We have Mr. Darby on the line, yes, sir.
Okay, uh, we'll have the invocation by myself and the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Thomas Harden.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us. Lord, we thank you for all of the blessings that you've bestowed on our community. We thank you for the progress that the world and our country and our city has made in containing the virus, Lord. Lord, we pray for those who have lost loved ones, we pray for those who are sick. And, Lord, we pray for continued wisdom concerning the virus, plus all of the financial challenges, Lord, for our nation, our state, and for us in the city council meeting today. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Um, Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Larkin? Accent? Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Darby? Um, Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Irwin?
Here.
Mr. Harvey?
Here.
Uh, Phyllis, what's that feedback we're getting?
The feedback is from everybody on the computer. Hey, guys, uh, everybody that's on the WebEx call, can you please mute your microphone until it's time for you to speak?
Bottom right.
Thank you. We're do- actually doing WebEx, we actually have some people joining us via WebEx today.
Okay. All righty, uh, it sounds like the feedback is gone. Uh, let's see, uh, do you want to go over some housekeeping rules?
Yes, sir, um, in accordance with the Governor's proclamation number JBE twenty twenty dash thirty, section four, any citizen that wishes to observe the city council meetings live may do so at our website, bojercity.org, and click on the livestream. It also may be viewed on Suddenlink, channel twelve. The Bojor City Council will do its best to allow for public participation during this meeting at all future meetings until the Governor's order has been rescinded. Since we can only have ten people in the chambers for this meeting, the public comments can also be made via electronic devices. In accordance with Louisiana revised statute forty-two colon nineteen and Attorney General's Open Meetings Guidance, in order to meet quorum requirements, some Bojor City Council members may be involved in the meeting via telephone or video conference. If you have any comments that you would like to make on any agenda item, you may email those comments to cityclerk@bojercity.org, and they will be read into record. Also during the meeting, if you have any comments on the, on the agenda item being considered, you may call three one eight, five four nine, four five nine five, and you will be placed on speakerphone to make your comments. You must state your name and address for the record, and you will be limited to three minutes for your comments. We will allow five for an item and five against an item in accordance with previously adopted city council meeting rules. Please remember that this is not a question and answer session, and that you must speak clearly and slowly so that we can understand you. Please no foul language, or the call will be disconnected, and you will forfeit your right to speak. Since we are allowing for a public comment period, agenda items will take longer than usual because we will allow thirty seconds between the reading of the item and the vote being taken for any public comment.
Thank you, Phyllis, for reviewing those house rules.
Do you have your cell phone? Can you keep the timer? Because I can't put it up there with the live as well, I'm sorry.
Uh, and let's let the minutes recognize that Councilman Larkin has entered the building.
Yes, sir.
Without getting a haircut, I say, Tim. We talked about that last time.
Thirty seconds.
Me either.
Please, please let us know when he leaves the building as well.
Okay.
I deserved all that.
All right, we need to approve the minutes for the April twenty first, two thousand and twenty regular meeting in dispense with the reading.
Some move.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second, any comments from the audience?
Questions from the council?
Okay, council, please cast your vote.
There's Jeff.
Okay, motion carries, uh, we need to approve the agenda, there's no add-ons. Have a motion.
Some move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Okay, council, please cast your vote. No ceremonial matters, no committee reports, let's move on to unfinished business.
Adopted ordinance to appropriate eighteen million dollars from the twenty eighteen sales tax bond fund into the Walter Obigby Carriageway Fund, forty-eight of, ordinance number forty-eight of twenty twenty, final reading?
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote. So that item carries, number two.
Adopted ordinance to appropriate two million dollars from the Riverboat Gaming Trust Fund into the Walter Obigby Carriageway Fund, final reading?
Some move.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote. So that motion carries, number three.
Adopted ordinance to fund Max Bayou Rehabilitation Project for a total cost of one million, one hundred and twenty thousand dollars to come from the twenty nineteen Riverboat Capital Projects Fund and twenty fourteen utility bond issue, final reading?
Some move.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second, any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council?
Yeah, I've got a question, I don't, is anybody familiar with this, Tim?
Yeah, that's that one right over there by, uh...
I mean, I'm talking, I was think- thinking more along the lines of the funding. Where we had always contemplated. I mean, I know right now it's kind of hard to ask the question, um, we have zero money coming in on riverboat money, and I don't have that in my head as far as what the fund balance is, or...
We can get Ms. Fernandez on the phone if you would like.
Oh, we can?
Yes, sir.
If y'all don't mind.
Is Ben, can Ben answer that question if he knows that's what we've done the whole time?
I just, you know how we're keeping up with the fund balance? And I mean, because, and we've got debt service of nine million dollars a year.
Right.
On bonds, so I just, I don't remember that being something that we contemplated, and I may have, it may have lapsed my memory. And while this is important, it's something that we could put off for a little while if needed to. While this is important, it's something we could put off if we needed.
Hi, Stacy, Ms. Fernandez, this is Phyllis.
Hey.
Hey, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Okay, Mr. Montgomery has, uh, some questions about this, if you can answer his questions?
Yes, the seven hundred thousand of it comes from, um, the Riverboat Gaming and the regular capital budget for the year. Then the additional funds, uh, Mr. Manshak, um, I'm sorry, Justin Haydell, had come in low on one of his bids, trying to find which one it is, and said that we could take the remaining balance. Um, I think it's, uh, this state, I think it's the Hamilton Road Lift Station.
Okay, Stacy, on the, uh, fund balance in riverboat, we had always contemplated this.
And this is kind of, I think, along the same lines. So since his bid came in so low, he said he would pay the balance.
Stacy? Mr. Montgomery's question is, is have we always contemplated this money for, from, coming from this fund?
The seven hundred thousand.
The seven hundred thousand?
Seven hundred thousand was in, approved in the capital budget for this year, for twenty nineteen. And we never spent it yet, we're just now getting to the project.
Okay, so the revenue's there is my question, right? The revenue has been deposited?
But when Manshak did the estimate, it came in at one point one two, so they said you could take the remaining four hundred and twenty
Okay.
from the Hamilton Road Lift Station because the, the bid came in so much lower than budget.
Well, he wants to make sure that the money is already there, the money's already sitting in the account, already deposited for this purpose.
Um, I don't understand what you mean. This has to pass before we'll move the money. But we have the money, if that's the question.
Yeah, that was it, Stacy, I just wanted to make sure that this is nineteen revenue, right? It's deposited and it's in fund balance. It's not something we had contemplated in twenty receiving.
The seven hundred thousand is already taken out of fund balance, and so is the four twenty.
Yeah, all right, that's, that's all I needed.
Okay.
Hey, Stacy, if you don't mind, can you jump on the, uh, WebEx meeting? In case they have any more cau- uh, questions?
You know, speaking to the...
Okay.
I sent you the email link earlier.
Speaking to the timing of this, the, uh, you know, this is that deal where the...
Put it on my iPad.
Yeah.
The drainage of the two projects.
Yeah.
Do you have a smartphone?
Are the Carriageway.
I do.
You can just do it from your smartphone.
Only work with this.
I just wanted to make sure that the money, you know what I mean?
There is an app, but you can just call from the phone if you want to. For some reason, they can't hear you on the speakerphone.
That's exactly right.
Can't hear them on the speakerphone.
Who's worried about that?
There is a, in that...
I'm kind of worried about that side of it, you know?
Okay.
Why would you worry about that?
Well, if we, if we have any more questions, we'll call.
I know a lot of people don't, especially in Georgia, you know what I mean? But I try to break that trend.
Okay.
Okay, uh, any other questions? And there's no public comments, so, uh, if there's no questions, council, please cast your vote. Okay, so...
Uh, Mr. Darby, your vote on that item? Okay, got it.
So motion carries, we'll go to number four.
Adopted ordinance to amend ordinance number one thirty-three of twenty eighteen for the purpose of amending various articles of the Unified Development Code as a result of a regular general review of the document, final reading?
Some move.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote. So that motion carries, new business?
Hearing to review the recommendation of demolition and removal of a dilapidated structure located at the following legal address, five eleven Kelly Street, Bojor City, Louisiana. And the, the, um, permits office is on the phone with, to answer questions.
Uh, if we could tell, um, is that Stacy that's giving us feedback?
Can you see him on the... Screen? I can see him.
Well, Jimmy, what about...
Do y'all have several mics on, up there?
Uh, well, I'm just on Gina's phone right this minute, I couldn't get mine to come over to camera.
Okay, all right.
Jimmy, what about, um...
So we're on the, we're on the one for five eleven Kelly Street.
He made notice, he sent notice and then resented for this.
But she didn't, she didn't see anything that she wanted to not be here, but maybe be...
You ready?
Uh, let's hold on one second.
Hold on just a second.
Bye-bye.
Okay.
Y'all finished?
Sure.
Okay, we're ready.
Okay, we're ready, go ahead.
Okay, all legal correspondence on this five eleven Kelly were sent to the property owners listed on the tax rolls. Then the property became adjudicated to the city, and that's where all legal notices have gone to now. We turned it over to, uh, Robert Pugh for further recommendations on it.
Mr. Pugh?
Good afternoon, this is Robert Pugh, I get by Gehagan, it's my middle name. Um, I was appointed to serve as ad hoc curator to provide notice to these owners. The property is located at five eleven Kelly Street. As requested, I used information that's provided by property standards. I also searched through various search engines, including the Bojor Parish Tax Access website, Google and Facebook, attempting to determine, uh, notice location and their names. Uh, I, I determined that both properties are currently owned by the City of Bojor. And, but I did fi- I did try to make contact with the prior owners of both properties. I found that, um, Sapphire Lane Company purchased, uh, the tax CD for five eleven Kelly Street. I sent Sapphire Lane Company a certified letter, and they sent me a letter back stating that they would not oppose the combination. And I'll forward my report as well as an affidavit to the City Attorney's Office.
Thank you, Mr. Pugh.
Make a motion, we go ahead and set a date for demolish?
Second. So we have a, a motion and a second to demolish.
Demolish as soon as legally possible?
As early as possible, let's see if we have any public comment. Okay, if there's no public comment, council, please cast your vote. So that motion carries. We'll go on to number two, another hearing.
Hearing to review the recommendation of demolition and removal of a dilapidated structure located at the following legal address, twenty-four fifty-four Lamar Street, Bojor City, Louisiana.
Good afternoon, council. Um, we started this case back in December of two thousand and nineteen, we filed the condemnation in January of twenty twenty. This house is in bad shape, the roof leaks, the siding and the framing are rotten. Um, they've got old rags shoved in the holes in the side of the house to take and try to seal it up. It's got windows missing, it's got electrical problems, the floor george are rotten, basically the house is falling down. This one needs to be torn down. Robert Pugh, he was contacted to, uh, take and try to contact the owners.
Mr. Pugh?
Yes, I, I, I also did another search through the search engine, uh, Google and Bojor Parish Tax Access website. I found that the City of Bojor does own it, but the last owner before them, before the city, was Lynn Goodwin of Alden, Louisiana. I sent her a, uh, certified letter, also tried to call her from a phone number that was provided to me, and I never received any response from her whatsoever.
Counsel, this one in my district that I had to get Jimmy and Gordon and involved in recently, or several months ago. So I make a motion that we demolish it as, uh, as early as possible.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to demolish, any public comment?
So they can hear me?
Yes, Stacy, we can hear you, you just mute your microphone until they have a question.
Okay, if there's no public comment, then council, please cast your vote. Motion carries, number three.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Introduce an ordinance authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to execute the attached agreement with Manshak Engineering, Inc., and appropriating two million, one hundred thousand dollars from the Walter Obigby Carriageway Fund for services to be provided in conjunction with said agreement, first reading?
Some move.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council?
Councilman, start.
Yes, Jeff?
Yeah, yes, I wanted to make the comment.
Go, go right ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay, this is Jeff Darby, represent District Two, City Council. I was, um, interested in knowing something about the, uh, two point one million dollars. Given the fact the design of the WOB project is eighty to approximately ninety percent complete, and the fact that the Manshak Engineering Group is coming in somewhat in the fourth quarter of the game, how is it that their involvement, uh, would justify an additional budgetary amount of two point one million dollars? Is, is there a way to, to answer that somewhat?
Well, first of all, there's a lot of components, ninety percent complete with the plans is not exactly accurate. They're, they're, they're now say they can be done in ninety days, but there's a multitude of, uh, of right-of-way issues that need to be addressed in terms of relocation. They've already been addressed with Centerpoint, Plains All-American Pipeline, AT&T, Conterra Fiber, Fiber, Suddenlink, and others that have to be relocated before the bid's done. The second part is that, uh, what was identified was that none of the, uh, bid specs were ever in the contract to be done by the engineering firm. So bid specs have to be put together, uh, and, and that has to be monitored. The other is that there's a, there's already been hosted a meeting with, uh, UOP and Railway and TRC, which had never been accomplished before. So there's a lot of moving parts that have to get it to that part. Then there's also the management of the construction, uh, as it comes up, which is the bigger part of it. But, but mainly, if we don't get the, the, uh, all these utilities to relocate their lines, uh, this project's dead in the water.
Okay. What, what is Manshak's, um, professional fee rate for this project?
They haven't broken down in the schedule that's attached to the contract. Uh, I don't, it, it's in Schedule C of the contract that's attached for the mayor to execute. Uh, there's a variety of different costs, but this is the totality of what, uh, they feel is going to be necessary to get it from here to the end.
Okay, all right. Will, will Manshak assign a full-time staff person to the project, or will they sublet?
They're gonna assign a full staff person, I will tell you this, that since, uh, since they've been engaged, uh, the, the person that's been on this job is Justin Haydell, and he's led the charge daily. I've, I'm copied in emails, copied with, uh, various and sundry things. They've had meeting after meeting with TRC, uh, they had a meeting, uh, Monday with UP Rail Pros, uh, TRC trying to get this thing to the end, and he set timetables on TRC to complete the design. Uh, they, they now, uh, are addressing the issue of bid specs, and he's also, uh, conducted numerous calls and meetings with all the people that are, have to relocate right-of-way, not the least of which is Arcla, who's looking, it looks like for them to design, bid, and complete their processes five months.
I see. So going forward, what, what would be the role of the city engineer?
I don't see a role for the city engineer. I mean, thus far, all this stuff could have been done under his watch, which it wasn't, frankly. There was no effort to put in the contract, uh, with TRC, the design of, of the bid specs, which are the key to designing any project. If you don't have the bid specs, uh, uh, in the project, uh, then you're not going to be able to bid it publicly. Number two is, if you haven't, uh, relocated the utilities by now, then the representation about the time that you asked earlier in a meeting wasn't accurately reflected as to how it can be done, because it can't be done, and you can't bid it until you get the ri- right-of-way clear.
Okay. Well, I, I would like to highly recommend or stipulate that Manshak Engineering Group provide the city council, uh, a status, uh, update on a monthly basis. Since we're justifying their involvement at this late quarter, then, you know, I would like to see the project moved right along. And so if we get an update, that should tell us if that really was a good investment, that they were involved. So I, I highly recommend that we receive a status update on a monthly basis, once this contract is engaged.
I agree, I agree with that, Mr. Darby, uh, and I think that's easily achievable. I, the, the information that I'm receiving on a weekly basis could give you a update every two weeks, but, but bottom line is, once a month would suffice to, to, to encapsulate with the movement of the project, and I think you'll be impressed. Hey, Mr. Darby?
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Darby, this is David Montgomery. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, I, I would, um, was looking at Mr. Hall when he was speaking, and, uh, in the beginning, I would recommend that we have him give us updates every two weeks, you know, when we actually have our council meetings, given the fact of what they are doing right now and what had, the lack that has been done over the past years, would that be fair?
That's fair.
So I think it would, to your point, be a lot more enlightening to this entire council where we actually were on the project a month ago, and how fast this is moving forward. And, uh, I think it would be, in, in the beginning, better representative if you got that update every two weeks, if that's good with you.
And I have...
I agree.
Mr. Haydell is on the line as well as Mr. Roshanbach, too.
So if the council's agreeable, I would, I would, Mr. Darby's agreeable, I would rather, especially in the beginning, to show you what's actually going on, have that update every two weeks.
That sounds good to me, is that with the rest of the council?
So...
Okay.
I guess, um, Mr. Haydell, and he's on the line, he can hear that, so, um...
Yep, I hear y'all loud and clear.
Thank you. Okay, so in two weeks, we'll get a report from Manshak. Uh, and Jeff, I appreciate your comments, uh, any other questions from the council?
Well, one question, when, when does the, um, I guess the vital part of this is the framework of that schedule that you're gonna create, does that, when does that get, um, complete? Uh, Justin, are, can Justin, are you on the air?
Yeah, I can hear you, Tim.
So...
What were you asking?
Well, there's a schedule here, I see, that is part of your services, when does that, when does that, um, get completed and...
Yeah, I think, I don't have it in front of me, but I think it says that I will prepare a schedule within X number of days of the execution of the contract. I'm still, at this point, trying to get my arms around where everything lies. As you know, you have issues with UP. We have eight utility companies that we've been in contact with that have to get their utilities relocated. So when you talk about a schedule, are you talking about, you want the schedule to show when you're going to bid the job and then subsequently move into construction? Um, that's something, I guess, we need to discuss as far as what y'all would want to see from a schedule, because I don't think anybody wants to advertise for bids until all of the utilities are moved out of the way. And there's some pretty significant utilities that have to get relocated.
Well, at, at any rate, the, the, I, I guess the way I picture this is, um, is that you will become the operational engineer of the project, which it, you know, it, no doubt, it, it needed that. It just, I think it was just a much bigger project than anybody envisioned. And so that, so the, one way that we would be able to follow things that would be used... And so that, so the one way that we would be able to follow things that would be useful is to have that critical path schedule that would get us from now to, you know, to a ribbon cutting. And that, to me, is the, you know, when Mr. Darby speaks of the cost of the, of the management, the value of the management is, to me, a great value, having that and having that path in front of us. And so, and so that--
Well, you're--
The date at which that comes about.
You're going to get a, oh, I'm sorry. You're going to get a realistic schedule, and I could probably have something drafted for the next council meeting on the 19th.
Yeah, I mean, I wasn't implying that, just, I wanted to know when that, you saw that. I guess what you'll be reporting to us is just what's the difference between what's on the schedule and what's happening. That would be just, although it sounds simple, that in the essence of this contract, the way I read it, is the way that will perform and should put a lot of things at rest and take some of the, take some of the indecision and the things that are on us now away. So when you, when you do figure out that, when that comes forward, I think that'll tell us how often the reports should come. Do you agree with that, David?
I personally would like to see in the beginning, every two weeks, and then I'm sure at some point, you know, we'll catch up, but I think it's imperative that the council understand where we actually were and what they're doing, to Mr. Darby's point, your point, each and every day. And--
To get where we're going, yeah.
In the last week or two, it's an enormous assimilation of information and pulling people together that weren't talking. I mean, it's just, you know, this is happening fast, and I'm sure it'll slow down. And at that point, I think the council could say, or Mr. Haydell could say, you know, things have kind of slowed down, so let's do every 30 days. If it starts to where we need every two weeks, I think it's imperative. Given the fact of our history, you know, I always like to go back in history, and there were representations made historically, you know, on a monthly basis that may or not have been what actually existed. So I think it's important that we stay on top of this every two weeks in the beginning, and then we can readjust as necessary.
Good. Sounds like a good plan.
Any other questions from the council?
Yes, I'd like to refer back to something Mr. Hall was talking about, Exhibit C, that had a breakdown of the estimated distribution of compensations. And I'm a little confused with what the resident inspection is. I was reading that as that's the two RPRs, the representatives that were paying to be here full-time, 40 hours a week for a year. That that was covered in that $500,000. Now, that comes to $312,000. What, am I correct in that that resident inspection is to pay for those two individuals?
Mr. Haydell ought to be able to respond to that.
Yeah, yes. The, if you could just view the resident inspection money, it's a pool of money that we're asking the city to budget, that we can draw from to pay the inspectors. At different points in the--
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Will it also include any out-of-pocket expenses, like--
Yes, it's a flat hourly rate. It doesn't matter. It pays for their mileage, and everything comes out of that. And, you know, you're going to need different types of inspectors at different periods of time during the project, so that's why we're asking for that much. And also, you know, the construction duration will probably be more than a year. I think that money should last for more than a year. But you got to get some good inspectors out there for a project like this, and the guys that do that kind of inspection work, they demand a higher rate of pay. So that's what the money's for.
Well, I appreciate that, and I appreciate that it, that it may take longer than a year, because I was reading this as the contract does not have a, it has a start date, it doesn't have a finish date. So is the $2.1 million to get us from start to finish? Or will there be cost overruns?
It's, it's to, we weren't hired to do the design, I think, is that Mr. Harvey talking?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, yeah. You've got, the MTB and TRC were hired to do the design, which they have a separate contract to do that. So we're being hired as the project managers to oversee everything that needs to get done, to get the design finished, and then to manage the construction of the project and provide the qualified inspectors that you'll need to do the work.
Okay. And one final question. The paragraphs, I'm not sure if they're just misnumbered or what happened there, but we go from C-201 with additional paragraph A1 to 3 and 4, to C-204. Is there a paragraph C-202 and C-203?
Are you talking about in Exhibit C?
Yes.
Okay, I'll take a look at that, and if a correction needs to be made, I'll email it to Mr. Hall.
Yes, sir, I don't have that, those in my packet at all.
02 and--
I'll do that. I'll do that, right.
Yes, sir.
Mine just went back to the Bossier City webpage.
That's what you get for start to look at different schedules.
Yeah, don't look at stuff.
I won't look, and I'll look at the number we was on there. I should just do the need help thing, huh?
While they're working on that, Justin, can you answer a question for me? This, Mr. Darby?
Yes.
You are not acting as the resident project representative, right? You're not one of those two. You're the project manager.
No, no, no. Those people will be hired by me, you know, qualified people. There's a pool of people in your area that do that kind of work, so we'll hopefully hand-pick the best people to serve as the inspectors on the job. But they'll be, they'll be Man Shack employees during the time they serve as inspectors on the job.
Well, do you know if they'll be engineers?
I don't know at this point in time, no.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions, counsel? If there are none, then, counsel, please cast your vote.
Did you already do public?
We already did public.
Oh, okay.
Did it come up for votes?
Let's see. Tommy, we need your vote. It went away. Did it pass?
Montgomery, need your vote.
Did it come up on yours, Mr. Harvey?
Yeah.
Mine went away, so.
Okay, I'm looking for Mr. Irwin's vote.
Yours went away?
No, Jeff's went, it was up there. Jeff Darby.
I need Mr. Darby's vote, Mr. Irwin's vote, Mr. Montgomery's vote.
I voted.
Okay, I've got Mr. Darby's.
Need Montgomery's.
Yay.
My yay.
Mr. Montgomery, yay, nay?
Oh, yay. It's back down. I thought it was going to come up on the computer.
It should have, I'm not sure what happened.
Okay, for some reason, it says defeated.
It actually carried up there.
It carried.
It did carry, the motion did carry.
Okay. So motion carries. Let's go to number four.
Introducing ordinance appropriating $110,000 from the Hotel Motel Taxes Fund for kitchen and concession equipment improvements to the Bossier City Civic Center. First reading.
So move.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote. Motion carries. We've got a number five.
Introducing ordinance authorizing the City of Bossier City, State of Louisiana, to proceed with not to exceed $50 million financing through the Louisiana Local Government Environmental Facilities and Community Development Authority and providing for other matters in connection therewith. First reading.
So move.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Questions from the council?
Well, for the record, this is, we are not borrowing more money.
This is a refinance.
On the Babs.
Right. Counsel, please cast your vote.
Mr. Darby? Thank you.
So that motion carries, number six.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of another medical director for the Bossier City Fire Department. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote. So that motion carries, number seven.
Adopt a resolution confirming an election date change pursuant to proclamation of the governor, establishing a new date to canvass the returns of the election and providing for other matters in connection therewith. First and final reading.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Mr. Free?
Okay, that motion carries, number eight.
Adopt a resolution approving the appointment of a director to represent the City of Bossier City, State of Louisiana, on the Board of Directors of the Louisiana Local Government Environmental Facilities and Community Development Authority and providing for other matters in connection therewith. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council?
What is this?
LCDA.
LCDA.
The people that were going to refinance the bonds, I forget the name of it, but it's a state organization. Mr. Austin was our, has been our representative for a number of years.
Stacy is, I'll be Stacy.
Stacy.
Any other questions? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Mr. Darby? Thank you.
Motion carries, number nine.
Adopt a resolution to replace an industrial waste inspector in the Environmental Affairs Division in Public Utilities due to a transfer. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Questions from the council?
I have a question. Is this what we would consider a necessary position? I know Ms. Corriosa's not here, mayor, but--
It is. Phyllis, it is.
She's on.
She's on the call, Mr. Montgomery.
Well, what's the position?
Yes, sir, this, we have three positions in that division, and this young lady is moving over to the fire department in the IT divisions. We do need to replace this body.
What's her function?
She is a, excuse me, she's an industrial waste inspector. She goes out visiting with restaurants and other people regarding their industrial waste.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote. So that motion carries. That's all the items on our agenda. Are there any announcements from the council? Mayor, would you like to say anything? If there are none, then this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.